We have everyone?
Uh, we have Leo.
We're waiting on Leo.
Am I missing him, or I think we're still waiting for Leo?
Yeah, I think we're still waiting. Um, Rachel, let's see, who needs, well, I guess we can figure out who needs to be co-host. A little further down the meeting.
Uh, we do have a couple executive sessions with the staff hires. Should I set up a separate executive session, section, executive session link?
Um, why don't I send a Google Meet?
Okay, that's fine. All right, there's Leo. We got the full board. I had not seen too many more people trickle in, so why don't we go ahead and start? So even though this is, um, this was called, uh, as, no, I'm sorry, yeah. So we'll go ahead, uh, call a meeting to order, and would all who wish join me on the pledge of allegiance. Whatever direction you think you have a flag in your orientation. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So have one agenda adjustment. We need to schedule, uh, an additional board meeting because we have a contract coming forward, we hope. So, um, I would make a motion to adjust the agenda by adding item 10A. Scheduling of a board meeting is, but otherwise the agenda is presented. Is there a second for that?
A second.
Any discussion or other agenda adjustments? Go ahead and do a vote, and I know we have a couple of new people on tonight. We have to do a roll call vote by state law when we're on Zoom, so we will do a roll call vote. Erin?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Leo? You look like an aye, but we couldn't hear you.
Aye.
Okay, great. Yep, heard that. Mark says aye, and I also vote aye. So we will move on to consideration of the minutes. I would make a motion to improve the minutes for June 2nd, 2020, as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussions or changes? Okay, we'll move to a vote. Erin?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Leo?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I also vote aye. We have minutes from the meeting of June 9th. Kind of reminds you how many meetings we've been having lately. Crazy summer. I would make a motion to approve the minutes of June 9th, 2020, as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion or corrections? We'll move to a vote. Erin?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Leo?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Do not believe we had any warrants. We cleaned those up last week. We now have public comment. If anybody, we have two public comment periods, one at the beginning of the meeting, one at the end. You're welcome to address any topic. Just give people a minute to see if anybody wants to make a public comment. I am not seeing public comments, so we'll go ahead and move on. Uh, acknowledgements. Erin, any, I know we've acknowledged, I think, three straight weeks in a row, and the semester's over, so don't feel obligated to have acknowledgements, but anything you want to throw in, Erin?
Uh, I don't have anything at this time.
Jake?
Yep, I would like to acknowledge summer instruction and the staff associated with that. That actually started today.
Great. Leo?
I don't have anything.
Mark?
I don't have anything either.
I don't think I have anything to add. Meredith?
Yes, um, Shauna sent us some good news that I want to just share publicly. One of our staff members, Kami Carter, was recognized by the MEA for a Human and Civil Rights Award for her work as the co-founder of Operation Breaking Stereotypes. Actually, she and Connie Carter, who also partners with our middle school OBS program, were both recognized. Connie was recognized as the Golden Apple Award winner, and then Kami for the Human and Civil Rights Award. So I want to recognize both of them for their important contributions to our school and this community, and just thank them for their service.
Great. Anything we missed?
I just want to add, they did, like, the, uh, the OBS, they did a great job this year at the middle school. Very, uh, very proud of what they did here.
OBS is a great program. I've been both invited guest and had some of my children participate. It is a great program, so I really appreciate that's occurring. So we're, I don't think we have any presentations. Is that correct, Meredith? Onto discussion items. So on to discussion items. Reopen Advisory Committee update. You want to update that, Meredith?
Sure, we had our first meeting with the advisory committee last night. Leo helped me remember, was it 24 people in attendance, 25? But it was a great, uh, a great meeting, a nice start for the work. It's a very diverse, it's into the, um, composition of the committee. Last night, the outcome of our meeting was the development of a work plan that we're, um, going to work through. Really, the month of July is going to be busy with this work. I shared the kind of start of that work plan in your, in your board folder tonight, so you can take a look at that and see kind of how that's structured, and what we're getting start, started with is working on physical health and safety considerations to develop, um, frameworks and, um, um, some guidelines that schools groups will then use to develop procedures around how we're going to carry those out. So that's the first, uh, step of the, the work, and, um, and then we're going to move into, take that and apply it to kind of the pathways that we've identified as the potential, likely paths forward, like, uh, the full return to in-person instruction, a hybrid model, and then remote learning. So, um, you can see the plan as it's outlined, and both Brian and Leo are on that group. All the administrative team is also on the group. We have, you know, a number of teachers. Shauna's on the call, she's on the group. So I, I feel like it's going to be a busy summer with that work, and, um, our goal is to be able to bring a recommendation forward to the board by early August to, um, determine kind of our path forward. Brian, Leo, would you, either of you add anything to that, or any of the other people who were in attendance at that meeting?
No, I think you covered it. I would just add, it's a kind of shocking amount of work. We're used to thinking of July as the one month of the year when, you know, the administration and the board are not hitting on all cylinders, and it's going to be almost the opposite this year. It's, um, very, very extensive amount. There's three different scenarios. I'll maybe just add that. I know the board probably already knows this, but, um, the state has asked us to plan for an all-remote instruction and all attending school instruction on a hybrid scenario where perhaps there's rotating students or some other version of some students in school and some students at home. So there's three scenarios, three schools, and details down to the level of where Plexiglas goes, what the cleaning schedules are, um, how we're going to achieve social distancing with kindergarteners. It's, uh, it's a very extensive amount of work, so.
Just to clarify, right, um, the state didn't give those level details, Brian, right? Is that?
I think it's more of the CDC, yeah, I wasn't exactly mapping one-to-one, but the CDC has asked for plans of how to maintain social distancing, how to maintain cleaning, um, those kinds of questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in, commend Meredith and probably the team there for, um, getting us going. It's, that's a big group, and it's a, it's a broad topic, so, um, I was pleased to come out of that meeting with, with some, some good direction and, and obviously a lot of work to be done, but so commend you and the, whatever team put, put together, uh, the, the structure that you did, so.
Yes, the leadership team and I worked on that, and so, you know, we'll continue to meet in between our, our group meetings to help, you know, shape the, the direction as we learn more information. We just, this work is going to be constantly evolving and changing as more information becomes known. So, uh, that's also the nature of kind of the the weight of the work is that it's, it's not a definitive path, so, um, we'll be reacting as more information is, uh, is known. And, um, we'll also, I'm going to send out an update to the school community at large this week, just to let them know the work of the, that committee, who's on the committee, and, uh, kind of our, our overarching work plan summary and, um, our three pathways that we're planning around. Any questions or other comments about that?
Nope. We'll go ahead and move on to the next topic, construction project. Uh, you probably heard a lot of it quickly summarized in the last meeting, but, um, I think the contract is just about to be signed. We had a kickoff meeting with the town. That was one of the conditions of our building permit, that, um, contractors, the owners, which is us, and the, um, town sit down and make sure that everybody's on the same page. That happened today. There's a more internal kickoff meeting with the architects and the owners and, um, the contractors tomorrow. And, um, yeah, they're sitting there planning where they're going to put down their pallets and where they're going to put down their pathways to bring the equipment in as we speak, so I don't know what day you're going to see, um, bricks getting knocked down or, uh, holes getting dug, but it's measured in days or a week or two. It's not, not far away at this point. Anything else you wanted to add to that, Meredith?
I don't think so. Um, I would just say we're entering into, um, the phase of work where we are finalizing some contracts with, um, for example, the architect just finalized the hiring of the clerk of the works. We are going to be moving forward with a contract with our, the construction testing company. That's an independent contract that we execute with that company, not through the architect. It's all built into the bond, but that's something that is our relationship with that, um, testing company. And then also we'll be entering into a contract with our asbestos, um, kind of oversight, um, contractor to, it's required as part of the, um, you know, abatement that we have, someone who oversees the work, who works for, for our interests. So those are the other two pieces that we're working on.
So I recall those are probably all big enough they have to come to the board. Are we going to bring them next week?
Um, well, I'll bring them, yes, when I have them.
Yeah, fair enough.
They're, I don't have them in hand, so that's something that hopefully I'll have them for the next meeting.
Any questions on construction? Next up, we have hiring recommendations. Meredith, you, it looks like we put curriculum coordinator first on the agenda. You want to make a nomination?
Yes. So I'm happy to nominate Meredith Diamond for the position of curriculum coordinator for RSC26.
Great, and to get a motion on the floor, I would make a motion to authorize the hiring of Meredith Diamond for curriculum coordinator for RSC26. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, and I always say this, this is, we do this on every hire, but we'll go into a brief executive session. So I would make a motion to go into executive session under one MRSA 4056A, Appointment of Personnel. Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Any discussion on the executive session? We'll go ahead and vote.
Is, is there no way we can do this one executive session for both, or no?
We have usually separated them out. Um, the executive sessions are supposed to be scoped in content, so I, I think it's cleaner to do, to do one at a time. All right, so we have a second on the floor. Any other questions?
Just that I, just that I sent you the link for the, the meet. It's a, in your email, a Google Meet for the executive session.
We, I haven't used meets before. I have the link. Do we just hit the link, takes us right there?
Yes.
Theoretically.
You have problems, let us know.
Okay, I was just checking. I have mine. All right, so we need to vote. Uh, Erin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Leo?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I also vote aye. So the board members will leave the meeting. Rachel will hold the meeting going for everybody else, and we'll be back, uh, fairly quickly. Jake, how's your dog?
Brian, you're still in the meeting, and so is Erin and a couple other people. You're muted now. That could have got real exciting real quick. That's why they have me, uh, doing the, the running of the meeting, so I can be like, no!
Good catch, uh, Rachel. That's a good, hey, Meredith, Richard here, so, um, good to see you. Th- this is just an Orenno tradition with the executive session, so, so it's, uh, I, I mean, I don't think it's all that common.
No, I have never seen it before.
Nor did I when I first came here, so, uh, get used to the executive sessions. Not safe to say, isn't it, Sharon?
Thank you, Rose, for the welcome. It's great to see everybody.
Meredith, did you see the question to you from Jay Hubbard in the chat?
Yes, Deb, thank you. I, I just answered it, um, but I, I messaged just Jay. Um, but if anybody else is wondering, I was there from 2018 to 2019.
Hey, Meredith? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I sure can.
Are, are you coming around tomorrow, I understand?
I am, yes.
Yeah, pop over to the middle school. I should be, what, what time?
Um, I'm scheduled to come, uh, meet with Meredith at 2:00.
Oh, at 2:00 later in the day, okay, yeah.
But if, I mean, but if you're going to be around before that, then I'd, I'd be happy to pop over then.
Uh, let me just check something. Um, I think I have an early appointment, so I should be in around 9:00, 9:30, and like till, I'll probably till about 1:00 or so. But I mean, if you're, if you're coming in, I'll catch up with you.
Okay.
But if, but if, if you're around, you know, pop over.
I will. I'll pop over anyway and see, see if you still happen to be there.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah, yeah. You never know what'll happen, like, sometimes you get, uh, you know, tied up, something happens, I'm here later, so.
Well, the, and these are wild times, right, so.
They are, but I think we also have to take advantage of these nice days, you know, while you can, and, uh, do.
Yeah, that's, that's a definite tension, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah. But, uh, it's, uh, I, you're going to like it here. It's, it's a good place to work.
I have a, I have a few former colleagues, actually. Somebody in your building, Amy Hart, and I used to work together.
Oh, yeah, Amy's great, yeah.
Yeah, she said that she is, is very, very happy that she has landed in Orenno, so.
Yeah, that's great, that's great. She, uh, she does a nice job for us and always, uh, she makes the best cake. I don't know if you know.
You know, I've never had any of the cake, but I've heard stories and seen pictures, man, and I feel like I'm missing out.
Well, we'll have to see what we can do about getting you a slice. It's like, I kid you not, it's out of this world.
Oh, Deb just said, well, we'll invite you to our parties, Deb. I, I'm already looking forward to it.
Who's that, Deb White?
Yeah, Deb. And Deb, to answer your question, I, I do not have an office yet. Um, uh, my fingers are crossed that I find out more information about that tomorrow.
I think we have, uh, a spot for you. I heard, I heard a rumor about that.
Oh, good. Oh, the anticipation is building.
Yeah. Oh, boy, I was out riding my bicycle, you know, before coming to the board meeting tonight, I'm just.
It's a, it's a good night for a bike ride.
Oh, it was beautiful, so nice, you know. Okay, well, I'm going to sign off for a second. I'll be back.
On the other one?
Well, only if you want the camera on over here.
Right. We have there's Meredith. Looks like we're still waiting for Jake to make it back. All right, we have Jake. So there's a motion on the floor to approve the hire. Is there any further discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and vote. Erin?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Leo?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Welcome aboard, Meredith. Now, we just have to figure out how to, uh, how to differentiate the two Merediths, but we'll figure that out.
And we've been working on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, moving on to the next recommendation, I bring forward Kristen Briggs as the recommended, um, principal for Ace Adams.
I will make a motion to approve the hire of Kristen Briggs as the Ace Adams principal. Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, I would make a motion to go into executive session under one MRSA 4056A, Appointment of Personnel. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Erin?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Leo?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I also vote aye. So we'll leave this meeting, and we'll be back shortly. I also vote aye. So we'll leave this meeting, and we'll be back shortly.
Well, congratulations, Meredith. That's great. And Kristen, when you come around, pop up to the middle school, I already invited Meredith up, so.
It sounds great. I will definitely, Richard.
Yeah, so... Be good to be in the same district again.
I will, I will.
Where did the two of you work together before?
In Hampden, RSU 22.
Oh, yeah, I've got two kids in RSU 22.
Yeah, what school?
I have one at Hampden Academy and one at Reed's Brook.
Yeah, great. I was principal at Wagner Middle School in Winterport for eight years.
Oh, yes, yeah. I think I read that somewhere.
Yeah.
Hi, by the way, Kristen and Meredith. I'm Sam. I'm the dean of students at the high school.
Oh, hi. Good to meet you.
I haven't met you guys yet, I'm sorry. I'm like, I'm always multitasking, but it's very nice to meet you both, and I'm excited to work with you both.
Thank you, Sam.
And Kristen, you actually had my son. Your first year there, William, both of my boys go to RSU 22. I live in Hampden as well. And Thomas missed you by a year, and Will, you had Will his third grade year, but he was over at Weatherby. So is that weird, like, who's really his principal kind of thing, your first year?
Yeah, that was really hard. Having... That was the... His class was really big.
They're huge. They are a monstrosity. That's right, yep. Yeah, and so they asked if I didn't mind if he was over at Weatherby, and I said, "I don't care." So then it was like, "Well, who's his principal?" It was quite entertaining. It's hard to meet you both.
Oh, yeah, and I would get over there, and they would need me back at McGraw, and so I'd be running back and forth between the two buildings. That was really hard, yeah.
And then when I would try to excuse him, I'd call you or your office, and be like, "Could you just call Weatherby?" I'm like, "I just need my kid. He's got a doctor's appointment." I'm like, "I don't really care who I call." So, yeah, it was quite...
Oh, my God.
But I've been at Orno for six years. I've been the dean of students there, and I echo what Richard was saying. He's very friendly, and I was listening to you guys talk because I was helping my kids with something, but it's a wonderful place to work. It really is. It's... I love my job. I love the students and the staff, and you guys are gonna love it, and if there's anything I can do to help you out, let me know.
Well, thank you very much.
I can vote for Sam. Good character, too, as well.
Thank you. And Richard, just FYI, my chocolate chip cookies are pretty good, too. They must be up there with the cake. I'm just saying.
They're right up there. We'll have to have... You know, you and Amy will have to have like a playoff. I'll be a judge.
I'll give it to Amy. She hands down deserves it. I just try to make people happy. She's the better cook, for sure. So that's fine. Meredith, what grades are your... Because my son's gonna be a freshman next year at Hampden Academy, and my other son will be an eighth grader.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah.
My daughter's gonna be an eighth grader, Rosalyn O'Reilly.
Oh, so Will Runko. I don't know what you think of him, or if you know anything about him, but that's my kid.
Oh, awesome.
Thomas was an eighth grader this year, but he'll be a freshman next year, so she may know both of them. They're pretty... They're pretty, like, involved in the schools. Thomas is more involved in music, and Will is more involved in sports, so a lot of people do know them.
Uh-huh. Oh, that's fantastic. And my son, Beckett, he'll be an 11th grader, so he's a little bit...
Yeah, my daughter is. My daughter's... She's a junior, too, at Hampden.
Oh, no kidding?
Yep, yep.
Oh, what's her name?
Jillian Briggs.
Oh, wow.
That's awesome.
What a small little universe we live in, isn't it?
Isn't it? It's crazy. My son's gonna be a sophomore in college.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
So will he be heading back in the fall, or is that to be determined?
It looks that way right now, as we get closer. I do know they've already eliminated October break, so they're going to condense the school year and make it a little bit smaller, so that there's not a lot of traveling back and forth, which I truly appreciate, because last year, we flew him home for Thanksgiving. He was only there for like a week and a half, and then ended up coming back again because of the way Christmas... The holiday, the whole vacation time.
They did the same, like, at my son's college. He's going into senior year, right? And they condensed kind of the break, so... But at least they're gonna meet in person, you know, for... I think if they have really large classes, they're going to do something else, but... But, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
I mean, I hope it is, anyway.
I know.
Yeah.
I know. Part of me is like, "Okay, go, go, go," but then part of me is like, "Well..."
Yeah, if you guys need anything, let me know, for sure.
Thank you.
I've been in and out all summer, so unlike Richard, I don't... I have an office, but I don't know if I'll be there when I'll be there, but just stop by, or I'll try to find you guys and say hello.
I know, Sam. I think you're just like sitting on your deck all summer. Every time I see you, I see you on your deck.
Hey, that is somewhat accurate, but I am working hard, and I was at school today and yesterday. I just didn't get the chance to see you, Richard.
Okay.
Apology. I'll stop by the next time.
Okay.
It's coming and going. It's a little crazy.
It is.
But, Richard, you were saying you were painting your floors. I'm... Your walls, I'm literally ripping out the floors of my house.
Oh, my God.
Oh, no kidding?
No, I have no floor right now in my... Well, my living room, I put the plywood back down, so I can get through my living room now, but not my exercise office room. And so that's why I try to go in the mornings, and then I come home and do phone calls and do meetings and try to work, so... But I have been working, Richard. Thanks, though.
Okay.
Sitting in my hammock eating bonbons. That's...
Yeah.
Man's been getting frustrated, right, Reg?
That's what Reg and I were thinking, right?
Yeah, Reg doesn't want to...
Hey, Kristen, Meredith, welcome.
Hi, Reg.
This is gonna be an awesome team next year. We're gonna be missing Sharon, if she can hear us.
Yeah.
Now, welcome aboard, you guys. Well, Kristen, we're assuming, right?
We gotta wait a couple more minutes.
I know.
Sweating.
Keep biting your nails.
I know. Oh, goodness.
It's a good team.
Sharon, were you out in your son's house, or whatever you call that? Were you just outside earlier?
Yes, but the mosquitoes starting to come out, so I retreated a little bit, but it's been beautiful out there.
Yeah, it is. It's nice now, yeah.
So Meredith and Kristen, I'm really glad you're joining the team. You are going into a great place. If anybody had told me when I started that I would retire after 19 years, I'd have said you were crazy. I never stayed anywhere that long, but it is a good place to work, so congratulations to you both.
Nice. Thank you so much, Sharon. And honestly, I've never had an introduction to a district where that has been the driving sentiment from everybody I've spoken with, so that feels really, really good.
I absolutely echo that.
Yeah.
Well, you know, now that we got Richard on board, he was really the motivator, and...
Richard, I love the T-shirt, by the way.
My what?
Your T-shirt. It's very fitting. It's like my favorite color.
That's my... The Bangor Five Mile Labor Day race. I got that...
I'm impressed.
Go off.
So I know, I know. That's right, Reg.
From 1988.
It might be back about that time.
Deb just chatted and said you should wear a T-shirt once a week, Richard.
Who said that?
Deb.
That I wear a T-shirt once a week?
She said you should.
Oh, oh, okay.
I'll be right back. I gotta go check on my floors. I'll be back.
Oh, I see. I see in the chat, during school, she says, yes. Okay. How you doing, Allison?
Doing pretty well. How are you?
That's good.
Keeping busy. Summer school started today. Summer starts, so...
You're doing summer school?
I'm overseeing a Title I.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so it was a busy day today, just trying to make sure everybody was able to get connected and, you know, just kind of making it. It's so different from how we normally do our summer program, so...
Yeah. Remote school extended, kind of, right?
Yes, yes. And, you know, we actually had a high number, or a higher number than we've had in the past, but we did have two people today, so, you know, I just don't think it's gonna work. So...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Meredith. What did you say your daughter's name was? I just asked Will.
Roz O'Reilly.
Okay, hold on. I'll go ask him.
And what's your son's name? I'll go ask Jill.
Beckett O'Reilly.
Beckett, okay, Beckett O'Reilly.
This must be my final vetting.
Right, right.
So Meredith, he said he does know your daughter, but she's in the smarter classes because she does better in testing than he does. So there's my child for you.
Oh, man.
She says she's... He says she's very kind.
Oh, well, that's good to hear. That's good to hear, and you gotta love an honest kid, man.
Oh, he's... My children are very honest, like I am.
Let's see, I think we got everybody back. Yep, Leo, Aaron. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Go ahead and take a vote. Aaron?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Mark? Oops, I skipped you, Leo, sorry.
Aye.
Leo, Mark?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Welcome aboard, Kristen.
Thank you very much.
Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you. So just to let everyone know, both Meredith and Kristen will be starting with us July 1st, so they're going to come onboard immediately, so we look forward to having them.
So next up on the agenda is policies. We're at the tail end of the year, so we have one policy that we workshop through curriculum committee and are just getting to now. We won't be able to do a second read until... Well, we can see, but quite possibly we'll wait to the next regularly scheduled meeting in August to do the second read, but we'll get a first read. It was one of our board goals, becoming more proactive about class size. You all have a copy of it, and it's in the folder of Board Information, if anybody else wants to look at it. And yeah, the board, I think, felt pretty strongly. We didn't want to get into specific number ranges, among other things. Our district is just so small that you can swing outside of those numbers pretty easily. We also didn't feel like that was the educationally optimal approach to have, you know, one number fits every grade or every class or every cohort. There's clear cohort variation as well, not to mention grade by grade needs. So we came up with a more general approach where we have a list of guiding principles. These are the things we'll think about when we look at class sizes. We set up a transparent process, so this is getting towards the... You know, we don't want to have it come down to the last budget meeting in April or May, and then have 20 parents showing up trying to convince us to add one more teacher. We wanted to be more clear about our... It doesn't really change, I don't think, what we do, but it's just now a written policy about our timelines and processes for discussion, and try to emphasize that it's a priority of the board to be flexible and responsive to changing student enrollment numbers from grade to grade, cohort to cohort. So that's all the overview I'll give. So we need a motion. I'll go ahead and put a motion to adopt... Sorry, to recognize the first read of Policy IIB as presented, and just to be clear, that includes the blue markup, which came out of the policy subcommittee. Is there a second?
A second.
Any comments, discussion, questions? On the one hand, it's first read. On the other hand, this has been through multiple curriculum committee meetings already.
Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong. I thought that we had... I'm gonna minimize my screen here. I thought that we had in A... Okay, so that means it's deleted. Never mind. A5. I thought... I was gonna say, I thought we deleted that, but we did, so never mind. I'm all set. Is there a blank section under flexibility, or is that correct?
No, just on the next page.
Okay.
Which is... That's where we just state that, you know, we have a goal to be flexible and responsive to student needs and student numbers.
I can't find it now. I looked at it earlier, okay.
We did, in the curriculum committee, have a different Section C, which was Tools or Toolkit, I think it was called, about different ways of being flexible. We felt like that wasn't really something... Some of them the teachers liked, some of them didn't, and we didn't feel like that was really something that should go into a policy anyway, that something that should come from the administrators' recommendations based on current needs. So the Section C is really just a statement that we are committed to being flexible and responsive and managing class sizes.
I think just that draft there threw me off.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Never mind.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion to recognize a first read. Aaron, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Leo?
Aye.
You moved on the screen. That's what's throwing me. Mark?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So we'll bring that back at a regular meeting. Try not to do policies at emergency meetings if we don't have to. So next up, we have Policy GCF and GCFR. This one is a second read. The board has already seen it once. This has been through policy subcommittee, I think, at least twice as well. Major change, so that we adopted a version of this policy about three, two and a half years ago. Major changes, we got rid of hiring by consent since we found out boards can't do that. So we will have to have board meetings in the summer if there's late summer hires. We added Section C. We spent quite a bit of time talking through and policy subcommittee, what kind of training we wanted to have and what messages. So Section C is much larger. Section C also clarifies and really, I think, coalesces what we'd kind of been heading towards, but wanted to experiment with for a while. But now that we've experimented, coalesces in black and white expectations for search committees, which, by the way, it got used on all the search committees we've done this year. And we got rid of GCFRA, GCFRB. We got rid of the four different category subpolicies and pulled it all into a table for search committees. I think those are the major changes. Yeah. So I would make a motion to adopt Policy GCF and Regulation GCFR as amended. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Erin?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Leo?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I also vote aye. So that's a policy wrap for the year. Subcommittee reports. Well, I just gave you the policy subcommittee report. That's a wrap for the year. Probably the same for everybody else. Anybody else want to jump in with a subcommittee report?
I don't wanna jump in on the report, but I do wanna just kind of throw out there that now that we have our new curriculum coordinator in place, that we can probably start to make plans for that curriculum subcommittee moving forward. So that'll, it'll be a good thing, right? We can keep that momentum going, so.
Yep.
Absolutely. We'll talk about that tomorrow, Meredith.
Any other, any other reports that we should spend time on? I think we would just be repeating last week if we didn't. Next up, so we need to schedule a business, a meeting to deal with some contractual issues. We believe July 1st will be an appropriate date. It does, it will be a summer meeting, does not need to be a long meeting, won't have the reports and everything else attached. Just be a couple focused business items. Meredith and I were looking at it. We felt like July 1st, which is a Wednesday. I don't remember the conflict, but there was a conflict on Tuesday. But we felt like July 1st would be the best day, but we wanted to get, hopefully that works for the board. Wanted to find out about that. And also, we've often held summer meetings at four o'clock instead of six o'clock, so wanted to get board feedback about the best time.
And we'll likely have, hopefully, the other contracts that we talked about earlier for construction testing and asbestos supervision.
Yep.
July 1st works for me and I can do four, five, six, whatever works best for everybody else.
I mean, we even did one summer meeting at 10. I'm, I'm flexible. Meredith, I think you're on holiday. What's your preferred time?
Um, I can make it, it's a low-key holiday, so I can make anything work.
I can go.
I would like it by four, I guess. That would be good.
Erin, if you wanna go earlier, I can, we can, I can certainly do earlier. I don't wanna speak for everybody else, obviously.
I'm assuming we're not gonna be more than a half an hour, right?
I think that's accurate.
Yeah, I'm flexible.
Yeah, if that's the case, I can do anytime.
Yeah, I would say probably earlier is better for me. I'm flexible, though.
Meredith, name your time. You wanna work in the Hudson?
Um, well, 10 o'clock would work nice, nicely.
Okay. So I would make a motion to add a regular board meeting for July 1st at 10 o'clock. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? We'll go ahead and vote. Erin?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Leo?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I also vote aye. So we have a draft agenda. We'll get that out today. So it's a regular board meeting, but as a regular board meeting, we can, or tomorrow, yeah, as a regular board meeting, we, since it's Wednesday, it's still seven days. As a regular board meeting, we can add things depending on what comes up. And.
Brian, given that it's a regular board meeting, you wanna, wanna put that class size policy to bed or do you wanna carry that over to August?
Uh, we have to wait two weeks, so.
All right, never mind.
If we have another regular board meeting in July, I would be open to putting it to bed, but, yeah.
I mean, what are really the chances that we're not gonna have them right through July? I feel like we're having them every week now, anyway. Someone's gonna come up with something.
This is certainly a record for me. I think this is, what, four or five straight weeks?
The downside is you don't have to leave your house, though.
We've had a couple of policies in the past where we do that first read and then we kind of, we lose track of them.
We had one, we lost track of for 18 months that we just.
That's not good.
No, I won't lose track of this one. I'll bring it back in August. Um, okay, yes, so we're, we're now have a board meeting at 10:00 AM on July 1st. Actually, I'm just gonna stick that in my calendar before I forget. Thank you, everybody. I know it has been a slog with end of the year and COVID, and we have done quite a few hires, so certainly kept us busy. Okay, next up on the agenda, any requests for future agenda items? Any public comment? Just give it a minute. Okay, seeing no public comment, or, well, we just said our next board meeting will be July 1st at 10:00 AM, followed by our regularly scheduled meeting in August 4th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Any requests for information or follow-up? Seeing none, we'll move in. Our last executive session is on labor negotiations, so I will make a motion go into executive session under 1 MRSA 4056D, labor negotiations. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? And I will just say this is, there will be no votes taken after this except for a motion to adjourn. So we are going to use this Zoom meeting for executive session, so people can go ahead and drop off. And Meredith, I don't think you need any of the admin team for this.
I don't.
Okay.
Welcome aboard, Kristen and Meredith.
Yep. Welcome aboard. Excited to work with you.
Thank you very much.
And, yeah, have a good night. And we'll go ahead and vote. So Jake, Erin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Leo?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I also vote aye. We will now go into executive session and I think I am the host now, yes. So we'll wait till Rachel stops recording and.